How does the password change? You know, Dan. Reset.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Akron Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for December 10th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Mrs. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Mrs. Lasher?
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Reverend Walker?
Present.
Thank you. It's time if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our God, in the highest law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much and welcome. We're excited to be here tonight to serve all of you and to recognize many of our students. And that being the first order of business on the agenda, I'd like to start with our Spring 2018 OST recognitions. In October, we received the results of the Spring 2018 OST, the Ohio State Test results. It's our pleasure tonight to recognize students who earned a perfect score in one or more areas of the test. There were 42 students in Akron Public Schools with a perfect score. And of those 42, we had the following repeats that I would like to point out at this time. One student, Mava Lyle, earned perfect scores this year in two areas, fifth grade math and fifth grade science. In 2017, by the way, she earned a perfect score in fourth grade English Language Arts. And in 2016, she earned perfect scores in two areas, third grade English Language Arts and third grade math. And I am going to do my best, as is all of our board members tonight, to get all of these names pronounced correctly. But if we do mess up, I sincerely apologize for that. So I'm going to do my best. And the first one is, I believe it's Miley Corillian. She earned a perfect score in 2018 fourth grade math. In 2017, she also earned a perfect score in third grade math. Matthew Zimmerman earned a perfect score in 2018 in fourth grade math. And in 2017, he earned a perfect score in third grade math. Derek Steedley earned a perfect score in 2018 in fifth grade math. In 2017, he earned a perfect score in fourth grade math. And in 2016, he earned a perfect score in third grade math. Kenton Kern earned a perfect score in 2018 in eighth grade math. In 2017, he earned a perfect score in fifth grade social studies. David Bechtel earned a perfect score in 2018 in Algebra I, no less. In 2017, he earned a perfect score in seventh grade math. And in 2016, he earned a perfect score in sixth grade math. These perfect scores did not happen by accident. We know that. It took a lot of hard work and studying, not only on the part of students, but it took a lot of hard work on the part of their teachers. And just as importantly, it took a lot of hard work from many of you in this room and outside in the hallway, many of the parents, friends, grandparents, family members that encouraged their students. And we want to thank you for being a part of their education and helping our students be so successful. Thank you. Because we have so many students that we get to recognize tonight, we have split the work up between our board members. So we're going to kind of take turns calling all of the names. And again, we are going to do our best to pronounce your names correctly. And so hopefully, we do that justice. If we mispronounce your name, please feel free to let us know when you get up here and we'll correct it so that everyone can hear your name the way that it should be called. As we call your name, what we'd like to do is ask you to come up front, to my right, to your left, stage right, if you will. And we're going to ask you to stand over here. And if anyone wants to snap a quick picture or something, go for it. We'll do a group picture at the end. I think there are about 22 or so students out of the 42 that were able to be here with us tonight. There may be a few more that didn't get to RSVP in time but are here. So we'll do a quick picture. We'll do a group picture after. And when you exit, if the students could exit behind the board here and grab one of the bags, each of the students gets a bag over here to my left, your right. But if you've got a perfect score in Algebra I, I'm pretty sure you can follow this. All right. Now, as we call the students' names, we're going to, again, we're going to give them their certificate, snap a quick photo, mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, friend, if you're here and you want to snap a quick picture again, we'll be over here to the right. And for those students that aren't here tonight, we will make sure that their certificates in their bag and everything gets them. Okay? You ready? All right. For our first student tonight, Karis Field, Miller South School for Visual and Performing Arts, for receiving a perfect score on the Spring 2018 Ohio State Test in the area of Grade Four English Language Arts.
We're in front of the kid with the blue jacket.
All right. Lily Pullingham from Litchfield Middle School for a perfect score in Grade Five English Language Arts. Lily Pullingham. All right. Paul Joliet, Nifstan Middle School for a perfect score in the area of Grade Five Science. You guys want a photo? Joliet, Paul Joliet. Mava Lyle for a perfect score in the area of Fifth Grade Science from Litchfield Middle School. And also, Mava Lyle for a perfect score in the area of Fifth Grade Mathematics. She was one of our students that achieved two perfect scores. She would have been though because she got a perfect score in math. Connor Cox for a perfect score from King Community Learning Center for a perfect score in the area of Grade Three Mathematics. Delaney Lewis, King Community Learning Center for a perfect score in the area of Third Grade Mathematics. All right. All right. Delaney's not with us, but we will make sure that she gets this. Reverend Walker?
Thank you.
President?
And our next individuals, they will come forward once your name is called. Arma Anderson from Judy Resnick, CLC, perfect score in the area of Grade Three Mathematics. I wrote Anderson. Joan Young from Windermere Community Learning Center, perfect score in the area of Grade Three Mathematics. Joanne. Leila Gregory from Sam Salem Community Learning Center, perfect score in the area of Grade Three Mathematics. Audrey Alder. King Community Learning Center, perfect score in the area of Grade Three Mathematics. Andrew Burkhart, Hatton Community Learning Center, perfect score in the area of Grade Three Mathematics. Miles Wimbley, Miller South for the Visual and Performing Arts, perfect score in the area of Grade Three Mathematics.
Maybe you want to start finding a little, just kind of line up starting from the box there. And then as we get ready, as we're doing that too, it's not very often that we have this many folks and kids here. So when each of our board members, before you read the names, will you take just a minute and maybe tell them who you are and how long you've been on board, something like that? And I'll start. I'm Patrick Bravo. Welcome to our board meeting tonight. I'm currently serving as president of the board and I've been on the board for seven years now.
I'm Curtis Walker and I'm vice president of the school board and I've been on the board for 19 years.
And it's my turn. To Miller. I've been on the school board for seven years now. And I'm going to start with Estelle Robb from Miller South School of Visual and Performing Arts. She received perfect scores in the Spring 2018 in the area of Grade Three Mathematics. Next, we have Micah Bowers from Betty Jane, CLC. Next, Evan Clark from the National Inventors Hall of Kingsstem Middle School, a perfect score, Grade Four Mathematics. Next, we have Anton Koo from Harris Jackson, CLC, perfect score, Grade Four Mathematics. Next, Michael Heine from Reimer, CLC, perfect score, Grade Four Mathematics. And my last one, Alexander Wyric from Ritzman, CLC, perfect score, Grade Four Mathematics. We'll get this to Alexander.
Hi, my name is Ginger Baylor and the end of this year will be my fourth year serving on the Akron School Board. Okay, now on to the more important things. Mason Horner, Miller South School of Visual and Performing Arts, receiving a perfect score in the area of Fourth Grade Mathematics. Michelle Wall, Windermere Community Learning Center is receiving a perfect score in the area of Fourth Grade Mathematics. Okay, now, this could be Miley or it could be Millie. So whichever way I pronounce it, if it's incorrect, just let me know. Corillian or Corillian? Miley or Millie Corillian? This is Sam Salem Community Learning Center. Next, we have Andrew Dana Miller of Miller South School of Visual and Performing Arts. And he has received a perfect score in the area of Fourth Grade Mathematics. Next is Alexander Radel. Judith A. Resnick, Community Learning Center, who has received a perfect score in the area of Fourth Grade Mathematics. And I understand that he is not here as well. And last but not least, Jill Klopp. Jill is from Betty Jane Community Learning Center and she has received a perfect score in the area of Fourth Grade Mathematics. It's Jill.
Hello, everyone. My name's Morgan Lasher and I've been serving on the board since February. This is by far my favorite night of board meetings. Thank you all so much for coming. Next up is Whitman Sullivan, Miller South School, for receiving a perfect score in Grade Four Math. Next up, we have Reese Tucker, Betty Jane Community Learning Center, a perfect score, Grade Four Math. And next is Matthew Simmerman, Nifstan, perfect score, Grade Four Math. Next up, we have Andy Gao, Nifstan Middle School, a perfect score, Grade Five Math. Next is Adeline Carter, Miller South, perfect score, Grade Five Math.
You can come over.
And last for me, Anis Farag, Litchfield Middle School, perfect score, Grade Five Math.
And you can step forward, Dad, if you want.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Alexander and I serve on the Akron Public School Board. This is my ninth year. I have the pleasure of these young people here. Dylan Scott, King Community Learning Center, perfect score in Grade Five Mathematics. Next, Derek Steedley from Higher Middle School, perfect score, Grade Five Mathematics. Steedley. Next, we have Jacob DeKombi, I'm sorry, yeah, DeKombi, Litchfield Middle School, perfect score, Grade Five Mathematics. Next, we have Gabrielle Rains of Litchfield Middle School, perfect score, Grade Five Math. Next, Nicholas McKinley, Litchfield Middle School, perfect score, Grade Six Mathematics. And finally, I have Roman Attakari, Nifskin Middle School, perfect score, Grade Six Mathematics.
Can I just first say, there hasn't been a peep. And we started with the absolute youngest and went all the way to the bigger kids. And so congratulations. I'm losing my patience and you guys are being, you guys are being amazing. Thank you so much. My name is Lisa Mansfield and I've been on the board for nine years. This is our last meeting of our ninth year on the board. Thank you so much for letting us be here today and to give these out. This is amazing. My first certificate goes to Carson Castanzo of Litchfield Middle School for receiving a perfect score for Sixth Grade Mathematics. The next one goes to Lawrence Treffany of Litchfield Middle School for a perfect score in Sixth Grade Mathematics. The next one goes to Kira Fox of East Middle School for receiving a perfect score in Sixth Grade Mathematics. grade Mathematics. The next one goes to Kenton Kern of Litchfield Middle School for a perfect score in Grade 8 Mathematics. Yeah, up higher is always good. Not so much a worry for him, but you know. Alright. The next one is David Bechtel of Nipstun for a perfect score in Algebra 1. I'm glad you're here. And the last one is Kamara Shaw of Akron Early College for a perfect score in Geometry.
We're gonna have Ibrahim. He's our teacher.
Family, you all get a shot of that family?
Alright, folks, I have a plan, so this is kinda scary when I have a plan. Um, so here's what I'm gonna do. If we could ask these three board members, when we say go, move your chairs out of the way, or just around the table. And if we could ask maybe the parents and whoever's behind the students to move that way. And then let's get the, all the kids on this side, right? And let's put our little ones up front, and our taller kids in the back, and then let's put our board members behind that. And then, anybody that wants a photo, including EPS, can grab a quick photo. Does that sound good? So board members that way, parents that way. And if you guys could all just kind of...
Just bring our taller kids.
Squeeze in real close, like each other a bunch. This way. Couple of you kids, maybe starting with you, and we move this way. Maybe right here next to Andy. And then you, down next to Kira. David. You, and then next to here. Stand in the front of the mara. Squeeze in real close, everybody. Make sure you're in between somebody, so if you can't see me, they're not gonna be able to see you. And you come down this way, stand maybe next to remember Walker, right in front of him. There you go. Squeeze in, everyone. Keep squeezing, squeeze in this way a little bit. Squeeze in. You guys take a step to your lather, and you guys take a little step to your rest. Can you guys come up front? I wanna make sure we see you. Can you maybe stand right? Board members, can we squeeze in the back? But make sure you're in the middle, so we can see you. Alright, everybody squeeze in just a little bit, and smile. Smile.
This is the best day ever. Best day in Texas.
If everybody would look at the young lady that has the camera up now.
Everyone still smiling? Did you get it? Alright, are we good? Well, we got one more shot.
One more. That's it. Don't hide your beautiful faces.
One more big smile. Alright, let's give these guys a hand. Come behind. Anybody that didn't get a bag, come see me. Yep, if you didn't get a bag, come behind and grab a bag.
Well, she was quiet, so...
She usually screams. She did, really.
So you know I'm watching your stuff. You know my computer, you don't need me to be on Roger, I'm putting it up here. It doesn't work. I mean, it works, but I can't get in. Well, I told him I needed him to reset. He didn't do it. So it is...
Alright, I think we're ready to get rolling again. Thank you all for your patience. I think someone said it's one of the best nights we've had. It's a great night to recognize those kids, so thank you for your patience while we work through that. Um, next on the agenda, I have the pleasure of recognizing, um, a really fantastic program here at Akron Public Schools, um, and, and the staff, and that is Project Rise. Uh, Project Rise has received the McKinney Vento Program Award for Excellence from the Ohio Department of Education at the Statewide Summit for Enrichment in Education in Columbus in October. Shayna Corino, Akron Public Schools' Project Rise liaison, accepted the award, the award on behalf of Akron Public... I knew, I saw you somewhere. Uh, accepted the award on behalf of Project Rise. According to the Ohio Department of Education, the McKinney, McKinney Vento Homeless Children and Youth Program works to ensure that all children, including those who are homeless, have equal access to the same free and appropriate public education. An Ohio school district or community school that has 45 or more students identified as homeless, uh, through our e-Mus enrollment data, is eligible to compete for the McKinney Vento federal grant. Um, our board members, um, are particularly thankful for everything that Shayna and her staff do for this population of our school district, and we'd like to present you with this certificate of appreciation. So if you'd come on? Would you like to share anything about...
Sure, yeah. Thank you, thank you for the recognition. Um, thank you for the support. We have, um, I have some staff here back in the corner. Jessica Tiffany Kelly was around here somewhere. Mary was over here. Great job. We appreciate the recognition. We feel very fortunate to be a part of Akron Public Schools and get the support that we do throughout the district. Everybody we encounter comes from a place of how can we help you? What do the students need? It's never from a place of what are we legally obligated to do? And not all districts have that same culture, so we really appreciate Akron Public Schools. People, um, Mr. Rambler has been a huge support to us, Mr. Harrington, Sibley, Mr. Williamson, you're around here somewhere. Um, it's both. Um, when we come to them with issues, they, um, help us solve them and help us do it quickly. So we appreciate that.
Thank you for all the... Alright. Yes, again, thank you to Project Rise, just showing it to all of the staff. We really appreciate what you do. Our next item of business on the agenda is a request to address the board, the board from Marie Currie.
Hi, thanks so much. I'm just gonna cast things out so that you don't, so you don't have to wonder what I'm talking about. Where should I, do you care where I stand? Here? This is better, right? Thanks. Now, this is my first time speaking to the board. Um, good evening, board members and, uh, Akron Public School staff, and Superintendent James, and other community members. My name is Marie Currie. I'm from Community Legal Aid. Um, I'm a lawyer here in Summit County, but my passion is health policy. And I've come here to you, to talk to you today, to share with you a new education initiative that Legal Aid has recently launched. Um, and the reason that it's me who's coming to talk to you is because there's such an important link between education and lifelong health. Um, the, the project I'm here to tell you about is called The Life Project: Learning is for Everyone. And it's such a wonderful day to be here after just hearing about all those students who did so well on their tests and have them all be recognized. It was just a fantastic juxtaposition with, with, uh, with the project that I'm, that I'm here to tell you about. Um, our project, the goal of our project is to empower parents and caregivers to be better advocates for their student, students who are struggling in school. It's not to lawyer up for kids to get IEPs. I just wanted to make that very clear. Um, what our goal is, is to help parents know how to ask for what their kids need and how to help them find their own voice. Um, because that's not necessarily easy to know how to do. Um, and one way we are trying to reach parents is through workshops. And we've held five workshops already. We have one more scheduled for this coming Thursday at Finley and North Hill. Um, and we will be scheduling additional workshops in February, March, and April with our community partners. Um, and we think of it as success when a parent comes back to us and says they were heard. They spoke to the school, they were heard. We're happy to have them tell us that they, in the school, are in agreement about what the next steps are, and there's no need for Legal Aid to have any ongoing involvement, and they'll call us if they have questions. That's great, and that happens. So we, we, uh, we really feel good that there's a range of things that people need, and they don't always need a lawyer. And thankfully, that's the case, because we don't have capacity to give everybody a lawyer. We are working with a number of community partners, including, uh, Akron Metropolitan Housing Authority, Summit DD, the ARC, Juvenile Court, the Library, uh, Akron Summit Community Action Head Start Program, as well as others. And I really wanna be here today to thank you, Akron Public Schools, for your support of this program, and for supporting us in a really constructive way, and for recognizing that the goal of the program is to strengthen relationships between parents and schools. Um, and I have one other thing I wanna share with you. I was at a, uh, legal education training today, and somebody from the Ohio Department, Department of Ed was there, and it was a training around special education and trauma-informed education. And on the slide that talked about who in the, who in the state is doing well, Akron Public Schools was called out, so I just wanted to share that with you. I said, well, tell me more about Akron. That's my, those are my people. So, um, I'm really excited about that as well. So thank you for giving me a moment to address you.
Thank you. Will you please pass along our thanks to the folks at Community Legal Aid for being such an incredible resource?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, before we have our presentation on HR, we're gonna open the floor for community and school reflections. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share tonight?
I told... Mister... I'm so bad with names. You would kill me, too. But anyway, I, um, had occasion to go to Barnes and Nobles to hear the Bookto Jazz Ensemble, which they're excellent. I did it last year, and I understand that they go by a name of Key of Gs. And, uh, I told the young people who were participating that I would mention them tonight at our board, our board meeting. And what was so fantastic about this, we had, I mean, they had a female trom, uh, what is it? The slide trombone. She was playing the slide trombone. I thought that was like awesome. And then, uh, there were a couple other young ladies that were playing like brass, the trumpets and things like that show, and a guy playing the sax, and then they were joined by, um, Sloan Stockleff. He's a teacher at Kraus. So he joined them with his saxophone. It was just a lovely, uh, time of coming together and playing, and there was a lot of people who, who were in the store for various reasons, and they were like stopping to hear them, and like, wow, what a treat. So it was really good, and I said I would, uh, call their names out tonight. And tenor saxophone was Nakasha Miller. Savannah Taylor played the trumpet. Fran... Brenda Ja Thomas? I'm sorry. She played the trumpet. And then you had Marc, Marcasia Turner. She was the one who played the trombone. Kiara Merkins, the piano. Derek Martin, bass. DiMarco Cannon, drums. And Alejandro Ables, he also played the drums. And another thing about the one drummer, he, he played by ear. He didn't read music at all. So he just picked up music, whatever they were playing, he played it strictly by ear. Definitely a gift. Now, the Bookto, uh, leader for the, uh, ensemble. Mr. Calavan, see? I just couldn't, it wasn't on my paper, so... Mr. Calavan is fantastic. I'm sure he, he would like, oh, yeah, right, you really did a poor job. But, uh, Mr. Calavan, he leads that group, and, uh, he's doing a fantastic job, and you could tell that he loves what he's doing, working with the young people, and pouring into them. And they were so excited that people were actually doing, um, watching them and, uh, enjoying their music, so just wanted to give them a shout out. Then I had an opportunity to go... Then I had an opportunity to go by the rec center on Chateau and picked up on another treat, which was Miller-Salv. Their sixth, seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders were doing -- it looked like piano recitals, and it was all Christmas music. I recorded it because I'm going to play it for myself. But they were doing -- it was a performance. It wasn't a recital or anything like that. But it was just wonderful to see those students. I mean, the level of musical ability that they displayed and the parents that were in attendance and the people who were watching on, it was just fabulous. I'm telling you, Mozart, Hansel, I mean, they were playing the big guys, you know? Beethoven, those things. So it was really wonderful to be able to sit there and listen to their performances. So those were two of the things I did. There was something else, but I can't remember it right now. But those are the two highlights that I really wanted to talk about today, because those young people are really, really doing a great job out there during the Christmas season, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Couple highlights of the last couple weeks for me, anyways. The University of Akron held a luncheon regarding their starting a civility center. David was there. I saw Carla there. I'm not sure who else might have been there, but it was an interesting, I guess it's understatement, because we started off with just at our tables having a discussion, and then once everybody was done with lunch, a number of people got up and, you know, added to the conversation. I know it's going to be continuing, because I believe the statement was made, they are actually creating the civility center. So -- and it's just going to continue the discussion on how to be civil and, you know, sort of agree to disagree if you disagree with somebody. Something that's sorely missing, not just in politics, but in life. I mean, it wasn't -- it's not centered around politics, even though it's coming out of the Bliss Institute. It's, you know, talking about people in life being uncivil and how to try to change that. So I look forward to that continuing. Went to the Akron Press Club as well. They had an arts panel discussion. I know Lisa was there. I don't know if anybody else from the board was in the room that day, but that was interesting. I bring that up because a couple days later, I'm in leadership Akron right now, and they had Arts Day a couple days later, and we had some of the same people that were on that panel speak to us at the art museum. But the interesting thing about that day, as it pertains to public education, two of the speakers there that day were talking about programs that they're working on that address students and bullying in the schools and how to prepare kids if they are bullied, how to act upon that, and hopefully shine some light on the bullies and why that's wrong. But like, that was a little bit -- I mean, I think the discussion was about 10 minutes on that subject, so it was very interesting, so. And lastly, I just want to make a statement about something in the future. Portrait of the Graduate, I was talking to Reverend Walker earlier. We have a steering committee meeting coming up next week. It's on the calendar already, so that will continue from a steering standpoint. We'll report out to the community on what our direction will be when we come back in January, so.
Thank you. Just had the opportunity to go share with several of the board members at Suma Health and the unveiling with our, again, partnership, particularly with Bookto CLC. And again, the Key of G was there, the gospel choir was there, staff members, President of Suma, of course, our superintendent spoke. And again, to unveil to the wider public the ongoing partnership. And particularly, we want to make sure that, you know, we had an excellent partner for Bookto, so this is a wonderful start in that direction. So we look forward to that continuing. And the president said he was a graduate from one of our schools, and I ended up finding out he graduated, he went to Litchfield and Barstow.
I had the opportunity to take county councilwoman, fellow apprentice, and Jerry Craig over to a classroom at Cyberland, where we got -- had the pleasure of sitting in Tiffany Jones, the teacher's name, and we got to see the PACS game played. It's a good behavior game. I know we've talked about it a little bit here. I'm looking forward to also going -- I can't remember which school it is. One of the schools does it at lunchtime as well and has a more broad school-based perspective on that. But it was just a really wonderful experience to be able to show the difference in behavior and listen to the difference in behavior described by the teacher and how the children go home and share some of these things with their families and how it grows as the year goes on. She says it's a lot of work to front-load, but as the year goes on, she feels like the behavior in her classroom rises above all the others. And she was a fantastic example, so huge kudos to her for letting us come into her classroom and kind of show that off a little bit. And then last Thursday, or Tuesday, I can't even remember, was when the Akron Symphony Orchestra was at North High School. They had members who had been practicing with the students, and so huge thanks to Akron Symphony. And it was a really icy night, so they did have to hold the show for about 15 minutes to let some of the folks from the orchestra get in to North. But it was a wonderful performance, and the programs there are growing. Thanks to the strong leadership at Jennings and the strong arts programs there, we're starting to see those students circulate up to the next level. And the choir is a really good size. Orchestra is bigger than when I was there, and the band is building. So it was a lovely evening.
I just wanted to add to the event we went to, the Bookto and Suma event. The students, I didn't want to forget the students. The students did a very good job. The gentleman who was the master of ceremony spoke well, did a very good job throughout the whole program, was very personal. It's really nice to see him, especially a young male, because we don't have our males doing so well right now, but a young male being up there to stand and do a good job. And their gospel choir. Gospel choir was very good. The students did very well there. Only one male. I remember one male, but they did still do a good job, and I thank him for being part of the gospel choir. And then last but not least, our student ambassadors who welcomed us and did a lot of good things there, and they did a good job as well. So I didn't want to forget our students, which is something I'd never want to forget. Thank you.
Real quick, I got the chance to go to the EPA. Deala, along with Mr. Alexander. If you get a chance to see the EPA group, they are just outstanding. It was a really, really moving -- it was, they were just absolutely fantastic. And EPA serves so many of our kids. I think a giant percentage of the kids they serve are from Akron Public Schools. There are -- sorry, I'm just looking right now to make sure I don't repeat anything. Oh, one quick thing to mention, there is an intra-Acron NJROTC meet this Saturday happening at Hallett. It's all of our ROTC kids. I think it's going to be a really fantastic time if anybody is able to make it. And there's also Windermere's Holiday Concert. I know we all can't make it because it's on the 20th, but it's going to be absolutely adorable out at Windermere. Also, congratulations to Rachel Teck on the cover of the Sign Magazine. If you haven't seen it, it's a great cover and a great story about what's happening. And last thing to mention, there was a New York Times opinion that came out today that is entitled "Misguided Priorities of Our Educational System." And they're basically talking about how we spend too much money on college-bound kids and not enough on the rest. And in the comments section, I desperately wanted to leave this paragraph of like, "Please come to Akron. Please come and see what we're doing here." But I just wanted to share the last sentence there. It says, "We owe them, our non-college-bound students, the best pathways that we can construct." And it was just like they were reading the Akron playbook. So congratulations to everybody working on that.
And it was in the West Side Leader that Mrs. Williams Woods was honored. I thought it was coming up, but it was back in October.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, too.
And was not aware of that.
I saw it.
Congratulations to her and the honor she received. Thank you. All right. All right, we do have a presentation tonight from Ms. Kathy McVeigh and her staff on HR update on recruitment. Floor is yours.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're here to provide you with an update from the Human Resources Department, and we're going to focus on our recruitment efforts this evening. And tonight I have with me also Teresa Casut and Julian Foster, who are over here, who will be assisting me in the presentation. And before we get started, I'd like to give a shout out to the HR staff that's here tonight that came to support us, that are -- and we really appreciate you guys being here tonight. Raise your hands if you guys want to.
Do you want to introduce them all to us?
Sure. We can see if you guys want to stand up. I didn't think they were going to have to do this. So we have Jennifer Cap, just right here on the left, and then Misty Willer, Kim Barb Arenas, Lottie Jarvis, and Michael, please stand, Mike Casut. And back here, just walked in, Todd Wamas. Thank you all for being here tonight. As you know, our district focus is to be the number one urban school system in the United States with the foundation of highly skilled employees. And so that's what our focus is always on, is to find the best, the most qualified teachers for our district. One of the things I wanted to lightly touch on tonight is our transfer process. It's a teacher transfer process that we go through every single year, where we have 200-plus teachers put in for a transfer request to go from either one building to another or from one grade level to another. And it's a very long process that takes, really takes several months as we go through the process. And so we've... These are, in this chart here, are the transfer dates on the left-hand side that have always been in place for many, many years that we have to follow for allowing teachers to transfer. When we get done with our transfer process, at the very end of that is when we know what our vacancies are that we have to fill in the district. And that's where we then focus our efforts on our interviewing and selection process as we go through the summer. So what happened is with the prior process, as you see down here, the staffing process that ended in July, we were, in most cases, we were in August, mid-August, end of August before we were able to finally hire new staff that we needed, because we had to wait for that transfer process to be done. So in our last round of negotiations, we were able to reach an agreement with our union to move those transfer dates up. And that's the chart that's on your right-hand side. And you can see that all those dates that we previously had were moved up by two months. So what happened is, as a comparison, in 2017 and '18 and prior, we would have 10, and in many cases, many more than 10 vacancies that we were facing at the beginning of the school year. And the challenge with that was that most districts had already hired. People went out to college in Bay in June, and we weren't always getting to hire quality candidates, and in some cases, we couldn't find. We candidate all, and we start off the year with a substitute in place. And so that's why we had those many vacancies that went unfulfilled. Last year, with moving up this process, we started the school year with just three and a half vacancies. We would like that to be zero, and that's our goal that we're working towards, but that number actually was a phenomenal number that we were able to reach, because we know that knowing our vacancies earlier allowed us to hire earlier and get the quality candidates As you know, one of the things that we have focused on also in our department is not only recruitment in general of high-quality teachers for our minority recruitment. We know that black teachers improve outcomes for black students. And we also know that according to the National Bureau of Economic Research, black students who are exposed to one black teacher by third grade are 13% more likely to enroll in college. And those who had two black teachers are 32% more likely to enroll in college. This is not just something that we strive to do, is to increase our minority recruitment, but also statewide and nationwide. This is an effort. According to the National Education Association, "As minority children have become a majority in public schools, districts struggle to build a diverse educator workforce." And according to the New York Times, oftentimes in college, minority students are often the first in their families to attend and may carry significant debt and have high expectations for future salaries. Thus, the majority choose careers other than education because of pay. So we know we have to come up with other ways to try to get students to enroll in colleges of education. One of the tools that we have recently been able to use is this college recruitment tool. It is kind of busy, but I can just show you that this tool tells us Ohio colleges and universities across the state of Ohio, the number of students who are enrolled in their colleges of education. And then across the top, if you scroll over just a little bit, Julian, you can see where it's broken down by, under column P, of their male enrollment versus female enrollment, and then it's broken down by race. So we've done look at what are the top 10 or 11 universities and colleges that have the highest minority enrollment of black students, that we know that we can target those universities to go out and recruit quality candidates. So that, and we'll turn it over to Teresa, who's going to go a little bit more into depth with our recruitment.
Good evening. I think it's been about two years since I last spoke to you on recruitment, so tonight, Dave, I'm standing right in your way. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about our job fairs, campus private interviews that we do, how we serve as panelists on new graduate recruiting events, and then our minority So first, we have a collage of the campuses that we regularly attend. And if you look at these, there's a majority of them were in the top 11 from the tool that Kathy just showed you. We attend these regularly every year. We strategically attended actually six of the top 11 that were on that recruitment tool. And then in addition, we found two of our own, the NEO Diversity and Education Job Fair, that's the Northeast Ohio, and then CAMERA at the bottom-left-hand corner. I'm going to talk to you about that organization that we are affiliated with in just a moment. So we're always searching for top-quality candidates across the board. Our private on-campus interviews that we do, these are the four main that we do yearly. And Cleveland State was number one for the number of minority candidates. But we do private interviews for them on campus, and the main reason is we feel that it's more convenient for them. Also, it gives us the opportunity to get to them before they are exposed to a job fair and other districts see them. Last week, Mike and I did a private interviews at Akron U. I think we had 11 candidates sign up, and there was just one minority, female African-American. She was absolutely outstanding, probably one of my top 10 of all times. So very next day, called her back in, called the sped department, because she was in special ed. They came right that day. We interviewed her, and she's already signing for Akron. So we were pretty aggressive in our recruitment. Like I said, we've built strong relationships with them. We also serve as panelists when they do new recruitment events. Karen Gijic and her team go to the University of Akron for us every year, and they do mock interviews, and they serve on a Q&amp;A panel. Mike and I did Kent State last year, and then just about three weeks ago, we did Cleveland State. And if you think about it, we were one of two districts that served on that panel. So when those kids are asking us questions, we answer their questions, but what a great way to sell Akron. We really promote and sell our district. So that's worked out well for us. I forgot anything. Nope, just gives greater exposure for our district. Now, I want to go a little bit deeper into our minority recruitment, specifically our affiliation with our HBCU, a group called CAMERA, and Educators Rising. The minority candidate that I spoke to you about earlier, she actually is doing her student teaching here in Akron, and it just really hit home. She told me her story. She was raised by grandma. Mom had a lot of problems. She... She struggled all through elementary school. She finally, it wasn't until seventh grade that she hit a teacher that she said looked like her, so a minority teacher. It really changed everything for her. She did, her academics turned around, her life turned around. She actually became track star at Akron U and went for a scholarship. So we realized the importance to get minority teachers to represent our diverse population. Okay. So the HBCU that we are affiliated with is hbcucareers.com. It is becoming one of the leading diversity recruitment websites for both employer and job seekers in the U.S. This is our second year of affiliation. The cost is $2,000 a year. All of our postings, immediately when we put them, we post a vacancy in APLA Track, they are shot to their website. They then shoot them out via social media to all the candidates that are registered. At last count, I think they're affiliated with 94 historically black universities and colleges, and they're all out of state. So that's our out-of-state piece of recruitment that we do. The only thing is, in APLA Track, we track when they apply, we have a list of the referral source. So for example, if they saw one of our ads in the Akron Beacon Journal, they would click that the Beacon Journal was where they were referred. We didn't have one candidate from this HBCU last year. So we're going to try it again this year. Oops. We're going to try it again this year, and as you can see, we are on the cover of the magazine. Oops. We're on the bottom-right-hand corner. And then we also have a page, an ad on page 40. So we're giving it another shot this year, and hopefully we get more candidates from there. The next group is one that probably I'm most proud of, our CAMERA group. It's Cleveland Area Minority Educators Recruitment Association. We were on a two-year waiting list because this group is composed of just 20 districts. And you can stay on as long as you want, but if your attendance falls, they kind of get rid of you, and then it opens a spot for a new district. So we were on a two-year waiting list. This is our second year. Mike and I were part of a really strategic overall, like they did a reconstruction last year. The 20 districts divided into teams, and we worked on our PR. We had a group that went out to the black fraternities and sororities trying to steer kids into education. We actually worked on the job fair. And in the past, I think their job fairs weren't very successful. They had maybe 20, 25 students show up. This year, we changed it. We put it on a Saturday. We also added pieces of resume writing. What else did we do? Interview skills, and then we had a district meet and greet. I think we had close to 100 candidates for the first time ever. So I was pretty excited about that. And we didn't just invite graduates. We invited those that were maybe even two years out, trying to pull more students into the interest of going into education. Educators Rising, this is a dynamic nonprofit organization for middle and high school students interested in education-related careers. They began as Future Educators Association in 1991 before rebranding as the current organization. So our real issue, I think we're pretty aggressive in going out and getting our minority candidates. Our real issue is steering minority candidates into the field of education. So I think that really it has to be all of our mission. And this group is working really hard to do that. We actually, from the CAMERA group, we give scholarships to our minority students who are going into education. And across the bottom, you see where we have our Educators Rising groups in our high schools. Then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is, to give you an idea of our applications, those are also, we track those. This is the total number of administrative applicants for the past two and a half years. And as you can see, the majority of the applicants are white. Then we have 22% are African-American, and then some chose no response and other. So this is just administrative only. So if you look at that, for the African-American, 22%, when we look at our actual overall, we hired, what was it, 99 total hired in the past two and a half years, we are at or a little bit above the ratio. For teachers, it even gets a little bit better. Our number of applicants, the African-American was 10.7%, and then white applicants were 79.8%. But if you look at our total hiring, it actually went up to 19% from the 10% total applicants. So like I said, I think we're pretty aggressive in going out there. We realize the importance of minority recruitment and just top-quality candidates in general. And now, I would like to introduce the newest member of HR. He's doing a phenomenal job with our subdepartment, Julian Foster.
Thank you, Teresa. Good afternoon, everyone. Here in the Human Resources Department, we understand how important it is to continue the education of our students in the classroom. With that in mind, our main objective as a department is to continue to close the gap, especially with our fulfillment ratio. Each year, as you can see, since 2015, we've had the opportunity to grow and grow and grow, and we're currently operating at 98%. In the past, we've tried different things. At one point during the 2016 school year, we used an outside outsourcing agency, but we saw the results with them just because we used the same type of software that they had, and we used the same type of recruiting tactics that they had. In 2017, we decided to bring the responsibilities back in-house. We made an additional hire as myself. And then the goal was to specifically focus on substitute teaching department in closing that gap and try to get to 100%. And our main goal is always to get to 100% in order to make sure that we're on the fulfillment rate. To keep things in perspective, I did try to contact, I did contact the Ohio Department of Education in order to see what the state of Ohio fulfillment rate is for the substitute teaching departments. However, there isn't anything that has to report to them. But I did follow up with a couple outsourcing groups, contacted them, and the industry average overall is actually at 85% fulfillment rate. So we're actually operating above that average, and we want to continue to do excellent job here with Akron Public Schools. Some things I want to share with you guys that we've done just in the past year. It's when we are recruiting our quality candidates, we're actually looking for a core group, a target market. We've identified four subgroups that is always available to us. Teresa already tapped on our college graduates. Especially in December, we want to always try to tap into them, especially when they're trying to get an income right away. And even after May and into the summer, if they don't find a full-time job, we try to offer them to come to our substitute teaching pool. With tutors here at Akron Public Schools, most of our tutors will work Monday through Thursday, and then they're off on Friday. We always try to get those tutors in our substitute teaching pool to be able to pick up an assignment. Every time that we see a retired teacher's name going to board, we always want to retain them. We always want to have that opportunity to have these teachers in our classroom, especially if they're good teachers, because they have a niche in education. Last but not least is the professionals. We always try to find those individuals that are trying to give back to their community, and also those individuals that are trying to have a small type of supplemental income. In addition to those avenues that we already mentioned for recruiting, we've also conducted onsite job fairs in 2018 of March over at the Otte Building. We also participated in various non-teacher job fairs right in the Akron area for solid candidates. And then once we identified our core group, we then had the opportunity to build upon this and start to grow our subpool. In order for us to actively close the gap, we had to implement aggressive native staffing practices. Within the past year, we developed two items, two simple things. The first one was a last-minute call-off list. We caught individuals at the very last minute of the day, of the morning. If they didn't have the chance to pick up an assignment the night before, we would call them that morning at the very last minute, 8:00, 8:15, actually pick up a phone and say, hey, would you be willing to come in and pick up an assignment? And that has worked, something just as simple as that. Then also, we developed a sub-email blast list. We would send an email either the night before or the morning of to fulfill open assignments in order to make sure we had the correct amount of fulfillments. Daily, we would always review candidates on a daily basis. For those that qualify, we set up face-to-face interviews and evaluations. And in that way, when we do a day, we were able to afford upon our subpool. That special two-school had third and fourth grades, and for the next year, they're going to open up second and fifth grade. So with that in mind, and even with other APS buildings, we developed an appropriate coverage with an internal substitute teaching staff in order to have the appropriate coverage. And then, last but not least, we also noticed that there was additional state funding for 2018 and 2019 school year based upon our numbers of students. With that in mind, we noticed that there was more professional development days. There was more training days. And we had to work hand-in-hand with our teachers and with our principals and assistant principals, and even with our different departments throughout Akron Public Schools. Each year, we are consistently brainstorming with departments, and we're also trying to make sure we're on the right path. With that being said, that pretty much concludes our presentation. If you guys would like to join me in the recruitment division. Is there any questions? Yes.
You said that you work with the HBCU that service, and pretty much most of the historically black colleges and universities do work with out-of-state. So you don't do any work with Central State or Willmore?
We have gone to Central State, just haven't been very successful.
And what has been the response? They are looking for warm climate?
Honestly, the couple times that we were going to go, we were promised a large pool of candidates. We took four administrators, like our first time down, and it ended up to be two candidates.
Follow-up to that, I was curious, I was thinking, you know, we're talking about University of Akron, and we have that recruitment tool. Is there a reason, did we look at a reason why we only had one minority student apply out of University of Akron this last round? You know, are we doing surveys?
This is just December grads.
That's just, oh, just December grads?
Yes.
I guess I'd be curious how many African-American candidates were available in December. Probably was, I happen to assume May graduation has a larger class.
Yes.
Just curious if we look at those things. You know, I don't know, I don't know how you'd reach out to every minority student at the target schools and ask, why didn't you actually want to interview with Akron? I'd be curious if we do that, or, you know, if there's a tool to do that or not. But I guess I'd be curious to know why they, you know, wouldn't want to work here.
We generally have a really good response, especially from those that are doing our student teaching. It's just, it's the amount of minority candidates, it's just not there. But most do interview, and most are interested in that.
And then you said Cleveland State has the highest.
Mm-hmm.
Well, how well do we recruit out of Cleveland State?
We do. That's where we were just, two weeks ago, we were actually the one of two districts that were on their panel. We do a lot, we do heavy recruitment there. And I noticed just being on their panel and being able to answer the questions when they did a district meet and greet, there were probably 25 districts. We have a lot of candidates coming to us.
I think this is like why it's so important to grow our own, within our own system, so that we have what we need at some point. I mean, it's a process, so.
That's what we're hoping to do through Educators Rising.
Greg, Bruce, and then Morgan.
I just had a question, or two questions, actually. One, Youngstown State didn't have an asterisk by it. What was the asterisk for? And I was wondering.
That's where we served as panelists.
So you just served as a panel, you don't do any recruiting there?
They didn't have like a Q&amp;A. We do do recruiting there. But they didn't have a Q&amp;A for their graduates that we were asked to be on the panel. I don't even think they do a Q&amp;A.
Do I need to call Youngstown State?
Yes.
Talk to President Trussell down there, see what's happening. And the other part is, other question is, we're talking about our students in Akron Public Schools. Have we thought about having an education academy? Where we look at kids who might want to get an education and say, okay. I mean, I don't know, we're ready for an academy, but even just looking at some of those kids who might be interested in education and kind of work with them and put them on the track of education. So I'm not sure, just looking over there, somebody.
I think they have some of the book.
So yeah, so our, we have two education pathways, one at North and one at Fort Worth. So we are absolutely trying to grow our own and get our kids interested. And the Educators Rising organization that Teresa mentioned, we have different kind of student organizations around that that are really getting kids that may not have even picked that as their pathway, but still are kind of thinking about it, that they can get involved in learning what educators do and getting involved in the opportunity to grow our own right here in our academy model.
I've always thought about that, I understand. And I'm one of the old dinosaurs here from years ago in Akron Public Schools, but we had that, and then we somehow kind of got away to a certain extent. And then some of these things are coming back. Even like you mentioned, the call-off, I was a sub, and one of the things they called was the day of. If you didn't get a call the night before, you got called the next morning. Now with computers, they didn't have computers as much back then, but you guys are doing a little bit more there. So I thought that was good. But I was, I'm always interested in high schools pushing kids into education. Then after that, even at college level, trying to get kids into education. I'm kind of tough-tieing myself, graft and wire, why aren't they pushing education as hard as they should? Thank you.
Thank you. And before Morgan, I realized Tim didn't get to finish. Go ahead.
Okay. I was curious, back to the substitute teacher question. I know I mentioned this when I came back from Cube about, you know, the percentage of the population has anxiety and depression. So if you, you know, you use that same percentage of our teaching staff, you know, if it's 15% of the population has anxiety, are teachers possibly taking mental health days? And, I mean, do we, do we look at why our teachers are calling off? Which makes it even, they have substitute teachers, and are we doing anything for those teachers who need that mental health day? To try to make sure they come in.
Simply to answer your question, I've actually looked at data in the state of Indiana. They're recruiting for fulfillment ratio in Indiana, same as here in Ohio, and even throughout the Midwest. Why is it a whole different ballgame? And we don't have the data that kind of shows why our teachers are out of the classroom. I know my job, my boss is on me to say, hey, we need to make sure that we have the coverage. How are you going to get there? The why is a good question, and that's something that we can tackle as well, because that would make my job a little bit easier handling.
It's just curious, because I had a discussion with Darren Wymer. He was talking about how, you know, if a student misses class, how that adversely affects our education. And I'm sort of curious, if a teacher is out of the class, how's that affect the student's education? I know, you know, when I was a kid, you thought.
Substitute free day, that's right.
So there's no education happening in a lot of those classrooms.
Actually, we've done a better job with talking with our assistant principals, our principals to say, hey, you know what? This teacher's going to be out of the classroom for the next three days, the next four days. Mr. Foster, do you have anybody with this type of background, whether it's science, English, math? Who's your best? Who's your A-lister? We need that individual in the classroom so we can continue to conduct instruction in the classroom. We have about a good, we have a large district, so we probably have in each category, we probably have anywhere from seven to 10 solid substitute teachers, science, math. I know social studies, we have 18 that would like to be in the substitute classroom for long-term or short-term assignments. So we do have a good pool. That core that we were talking about, we actually ramped up that core this past year to make sure we have the appropriate coverage and make sure it's not a free day that are, you know. When I was paying, a free day, but when I went home, mom said, you know what, son? That's a whole nother subject. We made sure that we have a core group of individuals that are going to instruct and make sure that the instruction is continuing in the classroom.
And the teachers are good at knowing the people that they want to replicate them in the classroom because certain ones would call me, you know, because. in a classroom, because certain ones would call me, you know, because they knew I could handle their classroom. So, they would, you know, so they're a good resource for things like that, getting good subs in that know what to do and have good classroom management skills.
Morgan?
Oh, sure. I just thank you very much.
Excuse me.
No, sorry. But no, I thank you very much, and I really appreciate that aggressive recruiting, having the best teachers we can in our classroom. Must be our priority. And if there is anything that is helpful from us, me, maybe I shouldn't volunteer. When I was at OU, our faculty senate and our student senate and some of our board members would actually like write handwritten notes or leave quick voicemails to say, thank you so much for considering OU. We'd love to have folks like you. If there are things that we can do, we're very happy to support you in those efforts. So, thank you very much. And also, one quick thing, I think we anecdotally hear all the time, what are your teachers like? Tell us about the teachers that are in APS. And also, from like a research data perspective, taxpayers care about us having really, really good teachers in our classroom too. So, profiles of teachers and data about our teachers in terms of qualifications, I think it's a really helpful thing for us to have, and also for our district to understand that we really are attracting some fabulous teachers, and to share that with the rest of our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Nothing else on HR. We'll move to the next item of business, approval of meeting minutes for the regular meeting, November twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, we'll call please. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
This is Baylor?
Yes.
This is Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration twenty-four personnel recommendations and one recommendation on supplement number one. These recommendations are on proper form, and I move their approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have anything from... We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, we'll call please. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
This is Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
This is Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and three resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are on proper form, and I move their approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any comments, questions, or discussion there? Hearing none, we'll call please. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
This is Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
This is Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration eight business affairs recommendations on proper form, and I move their approval. So, move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the business affairs agenda. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, we'll call please. Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
This is Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
This is...
Yes.
This is...
Yes.
This is...
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Just one item. Last week, there was a final full court press to put into place the graduation requirements from 2018, extend them to this year's class, and then modify version of that for the class of 2020. So, you know, every resolution that we passed or conversation that you've had with folks in Columbus, we all really appreciate that. So, thank you.
For President's report, just read it briefly. Just as we wrap up a calendar year, though not a school year, it's been a big calendar year for us with lots of, lots of things going on, lots of announcements. Just want to say a big thanks to the superintendent, to the assistant superintendent, Helen McWilliams-Woods, to all of the senior staff sitting around the room for another banner year, all of our faculty and staff. Just want to say a big thank you. Want to remind everyone that we have a working session coming up, so hope to see all of you there. We just tackle a few items that we want to put a bow on for the holidays. So, yeah, see what I did there? So, hope to see all of you there. And then just wishing all of you the best and brightest and merriest of holidays. Hope you get to spend some time with family, friends, and loved ones. So, enjoy it, and we can't wait to see everyone back in January. All right, that's it. Treasurer's report.
One quick item.
No treasurer's report.
Appropriations modification. I know I've been nagging you that this is coming, so I just want to spell out next steps, process, and timeline. Appropriation mid-year adjustments are not really common for us, but they're not uncommon in government and budget process. So, we will explain a little bit in terms of the detail next week with our finance committee, our work session, and then a final resolution will be for your consideration in January at the organization meeting. That will also make some adjustments going into the five-year forecast in May. So, I just wanted to see how it's all connected in terms of that. That's it. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. Committee reports, legal contracts and board policy.
We are presenting for the third and final reading, and we're also requesting your approval tonight for five policies. And I will read those. Revised bylaw 0141.2, conflict of interest. Revised policy 1541, termination and resignation. Revised policy 3160, physical examination. And revised policy 4160, physical examination. And finally, revised policy 8141, mandatory reporting of misconduct by license and plays. So, we're looking for your approval.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the policies as read. Any comments, questions, or discussion on those? Hearing none, we'll call please. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
This is Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
This is...
Yes.
Finance and capital management?
No report.
Instructional policy and student achievement?
No.
I don't have a report on that, but I do have a brief update on the student board.
Yes, good, thank you. And I actually ran, so Brooke is a member of our church. So, she was with our youth Christmas party and was just asking me. I'm not asking you.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that we do have names that should be coming in to the superintendent's office in the next week or two. And just to give thanks to Miss Whitfield, who is, Mr. Whitfield is kind of leading the way, has gone to the secondary schools to give additional information as needed. So, there's a form out there, there's a parent, there's a parent letter of approval that the students and parents have to sign. So, those names should be coming our direction quickly and hopefully be ready to have some hopes and places on the board. Vast of theories.
Yes.
Building that plane while we're flying it, for sure.
Yes, and thank you for leading that charge. And so, those, you know...
Thanks to the staff too, for, you know, once we kind of just passed the baton, they really took off running. So, I did check in in this past week or so in New Jersey, and we talked about it too, and a few of us have talked to Dr. McWilliams-Woods, just to make sure we weren't just throwing something in the lap of the staff.
And we're working with the students that were still on the committee that...
We will be. We're going to be tapping them again as we're going forward, if we're continuing to...
Especially if they weren't selected.
Yes, to help. Because they're going to be another voice that has helped plan this, so we'll definitely be calling them in.
Help us tweak it.
Yep.
Yeah, and remember, they'll be seated with us next year. We'll swear them in. The goal is to swear them in at the first meeting on the fourteenth, and then we'll each be assigned, based on cluster and all of that, to sort of be mentors slash go-to board member as they move forward and sit and serve with us to help lend that voice from the students. So, thank you for all that. I'm glad you had it. That's great. Do we have any other ask my committee reports? Any unfinished questions in new business?
Mr. President, I have one item under new business that we'll have to discuss in executive session, and that's under supplement number two to personnel recruitment.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no other business to come before the board, then pursuant to Ohio Revised Section 121.22G1, to consider the employment dismissal and dismissal and/or dismissal of a public employee or official of the school district. I'm looking for a motion to recess and to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on executive session. Any comments, questions, or discussion for...
Yes.
One more item is legal supervision.
Again.
And also, if I may amend that, Section 121.22G3, to consult with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and the school district with a subject of inferior and a court action. Would you still like to make that motion? And Ginger, would you still second that with the amendment? Any comments, questions, or discussion now? All right, hearing none, we'll call please. Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
This is Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
All right.